Comment, is there anyone here for public comment? On any issue? Nope. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Public hearing, National Grid in Verizon, New England, Inc. It's a petition for a joint or identical pole locations on Rustway and Jerusalem Road. And I believe I have to read the public hearing notice. We have to, Tracy, do we have to open this public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the public hearing notice petition for join our identical pole locations for the Cohasset Select Board 90, and we're at meeting at 91 Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons, Cohasset, Mass. O two O two five. Cohasset Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February fourth, 2025, at seven oh five PM. We're a little late at 91 Sawyer Street, Cohasset, Mass. Or via Zoom with the link on the posted agenda on the town website. Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc. Request permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Rustway and Jerusalem Road. National Grid to remove one J O pole and install one J O pole at the intersection of Rustway and Jerusalem Road. National Grid proposes to replace pole one on Rustway and install a conduit on Rustway and Jerusalem Road. Install multi-tap switch and install mini pad for a single-phase transformer, Cohasset, Mass. The complete application is available at Cohasset Town Hall located at forty-one Highland Ave and the Select Board Office. Public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or at this hearing. So can I have that motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Chris Black's eye.
Paul Brady, eye.
David Frog, eye.
Is Jack on? Not yet, okay. So we now have a public hearing. In our packet, is there anyone on from National Grid or? Oh, you're here? Oh, please come up.
There you go. Think you are. It's not all that great.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Roach. I'm representing National Grid. I'm a designer there. So we've had a couple of failures up on Jerusalem Road and we're doing some emergency work now. At the same time, we really want to bring, we're putting in a heavy-duty handhole to bring three-phase power across the street. Today, there's only single-phase. It's all direct buried. It's been in there for a hundred years. So there's a whole program that we're putting in place to basically replace all the underground along Jerusalem Road from pole sixty-six, which is down by Forest Ave and Atlantic Ave in Jerusalem, all the way up to pole fifty-nine, which is kind of on the other end where it intersects with Atlantic Ave. So that'll be happening over a number of months. It's taken us about a month to do this emergency work. So this is kind of the capstone for this emergency work, which is to put a switch box and bring three-phase power over. There's a vault there now that's encased in stone and it's literally falling apart. So that would come down and there'd be a mini pad transformer, a switch box, which would help us with redundancy because we would now have three-phase power there. So in the event we ever did lose a phase, we could power it from any one of those three. So the redundancy for the area goes way up. So that vault would come down and then there'd be an underground conduit that would go all the way up to pole number one on Rustway.
Okay.
So we're basically replacing infrastructure that's there, but we're also improving it to give, bring three-phase power to give us that redundancy. So hopefully if there ever is another failure, we'll be able to respond much faster. The other thing is all this is in conduit now and there is, wherever we put conduit in, there's a spare. So in the, right now, it's all direct buried. If there's a failure, you have to dig it up and basically try to repair it. That'll all be replaced. So that emergency work, that's all been done. It's two, two, three-inch for secondaries and two four-inch for the primaries. So the spares all there. So this would really, the whole program, which will probably take, I'm gonna say at least a year because it's taken us a month now to do this small section and we probably have five more of that size to do.
Okay, I was gonna ask you how long it would take.
Yeah, it'll take us about that long. It's roughly about a million dollars a section in this five sections. So it's a, it's a pretty big job for us.
Wow. Wow. Questions, Mr. Black?
You're replacing underground with underground?
Yes, so it'd be underground with underground. It's all staying that way, but it's all gonna be in conduit as opposed to just laid in the earth. They've been there a hundred years and they're basically all corroding. So this gives us the ability to pull new cables and we also have a spare conductor conduit for every, everyone that we put down. So it's a, you know, there's redundancy having a spare conduit, but we can also pull the existing one out if we wanted to and put a new one in. It's the way to go.
Mr. Grady?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Farag?
No questions.
Mr. Grady, yeah? No? Okay. All right, so I guess we need a motion to approve the installation as defined in the public hearing notice.
Yeah, I think the, when we did our easement search, we couldn't find one for that area. We have it for most of the area. So we're researching all of that. We'll do that before we do any more work. But this came up and so that's the reason why we're here today. It's, but it's basically replacing existing infrastructure.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the replacement of existing infrastructure at Rustway and Jerusalem Road?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Chris Black's eye.
Paul Brady, eye.
David Frog, eye.
Ellen Mar, eye. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess if Jack doesn't join us, we don't have a roll call. So just give me a heads up.
Yeah, he emailed me. He said I'm a problem too.
Okay, okay, so. All right, so next up, Boarding Committee Updates. Cohasset Historical Commission Discussion Vote Cohasset Village Local Historic District Proposal for Historic District Study Committee, Mrs. Dormitzer.
I asked Martin St. John to come with me. He's on the commission.
Okay, please, bring up another chair.
Thank you.
We'll just name and addresses for the record.
Sure.
Jackie Dormitzer, one eleven Atlantic Ave.
Martin St. John, twenty, sorry, go for it. Martin St. John, Twenty Stockbridge Street, Cohasset.
Okay. Great. So welcome back, Mrs. Dormitzer.
Thank you.
So you wanna, you wanna give us an update where you are on this?
Well, we're ready to move forward now on the, on creating a historic district in downtown Cohasset. And the first step is to put together a study committee that will talk to the property owners in the village, define the boundary of the historic area. Work, we hope to get a consultant to help us because it's, it can be technical. And they, you need some support. So to work with a consultant in putting together public presentations to educate the public on what the implications of the historic district are. And what I was hoping to get from the Select Board is maybe the establishment of the committee because people have to apply for it and they need to have a committee to apply to. So if you could do that, that would be great. And I would be more than happy to help you with the appointments because the law is fairly specific on who needs to be on that committee. It must be no less than three or more than seven members. And usually it's five and two alternates. And you need to have an architect, a member of the historical society, and actually a realtor, which surprised me, but who covers that area. And also it's desirable to have a planning board member and a resident of the area. So anyway, if you could.
Okay. So we need to establish the committee for you.
Establish.
Okay.
And
So anyone have questions before we get to that motion on this, Mr. Farag? No? So I know when we talked about this in the summer of twenty-three, it would be contingent upon getting CPC funding to fund it.
Last night I went before the CPC.
Okay.
And hopefully they will, they needed to find out whether they could actually fund a consultant rather than just, you know, the
Project.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm hopeful that they will. I mean, it would be important to get the funding for this.
Okay, maybe the establishment of a committee will help prod them along.
Right.
A little bit, so.
Yeah.
Okay, from the map that you sent for our packet, it looks like it's going to go from, I'm looking at this upside down, from the end of the common area at
Yeah, the Sotheby's or
Yes.
Yeah, Depot Court to
Brook Street?
To Brook Street and the Red Lion Inn.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what we saw it as a committee. Now, the study committee will actually define the area more
More succinctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And well, it should cover Brook Street and part of Elm Street too.
Also, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Like the village proper.
Yeah.
Just where all the historic buildings are that have been there for, I mean, a long, long time.
Time. Okay. Okay. I have a lot of questions, but maybe for the next presentation.
Okay.
Once we get the committee and you get the consultant, so I'll, I'll save those.
Okay.
Then. So do I have a motion to create a Cohasset Village Local Historic District Committee?
So moved.
Second? In, in the, in the charge?
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Good enough, okay.
I don't think so.
It's a study committee.
It's a, yeah, it's, yeah, study group.
Right.
Yeah.
You had one when you did the Cohasset Common, right?
Well, there was one. That was back in nineteen seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, there has to be one. And then
Right.
That study committee typically becomes the commission later on. I mean, some people may or may not want to continue. Basically, the same people that put it together get to be on the Historic District Commission.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when
Okay.
When we get to it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Social Recycling Committee, an appointment of an alternate member, Ashley Kenny. Is Ashley here? Is she online? No. Do I have a personal comment on Ashley?
She's a staff member and it's really
Okay.
And they need quorum.
Oh.
And she goes regularly, so she needs to be formally appointed.
Good.
To come.
Okay, so can I have a motion, okay, to appoint Ashley Kenny? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Next up, Cohasset Harbor Committee, Appointment of Sailing Club Representative Jeff Donsey to fill an unexpired term until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That would be you. Yes, you can come up.
I don't have many left to choose from. Hi.
Hi. But so if you want to just tell, we have your application in our packet, so we've read it, but if you just want to talk about, you know, why you want to join the Harbor Committee.
Well, I mean, first, I really appreciate the opportunity to, you know, represent the sailing club, which would be my role on there is to support the sailing club interests and you know, I've grown up in town. I, you know, I think you might have seen, I've learned to sail in Cohasset Harbor. I was eight years old. I, I live in Parker Ave, so near the harbor, worked at the boatyard during my college summers. It's, it's near and dear to, to me. So I care a lot about making sure that, you know, if I can help contribute to, you know, the, some of the challenges that we still have ahead of the harbor. I've talked to George a fair bit about the, one of the priorities of the Harbor Committee right now and studying some of the climate, the potential climate flooding related issues. And that's something that I have some tangential background in, having worked with GIS software, supporting folks like the National Ocean Service and folks were clients of mine at one point. So I've got background that can be applied, I think, and be helpful in, in just helping review some of the consultants' work in that area too. So so there's passion, there's skill sets.
History.
Can bring, history.
Yeah.
For sure. So, yeah, that's, we look forward to working with the group.
Anyone have any questions?
Oh, thank you.
I just had one. The Sailing Club is one of the great institutions in town and one of the, I learned to sail there and my kids did.
Oh, nice.
Taking my bike down when I was young to go be an able seaman. But one of the great values of the Sailing Club is that it was welcoming to all. And, and that, that values that it had back then, you know, what Herb Tollhelp created all the way going forward. And hopefully they'll keep those values of being welcoming to all and bring it to the Harbor Committee as well. Because the harbor is for all citizens, not just people who have boats, but there's people who like to walk around it and use its facilities and the like. So I hope you bring those values to the Harbor Committee as well.
Well, thank, thank you for saying that. I think one of the things I've been doing the last couple of years is coordinating and actually teaching some of our adult sailing program. And it's pretty cool to see adults that actually want to come in and learn to sail and, and get in those smaller boats, which I admire them for doing that. But it's, but I, I think that's the spirit of the Sailing Club that you mentioned from a long time, is still the same spirits to, you know, provide folks recreational opportunity to get out in the water. You know.
My, my dad used to be Commodore of the Sailing Club.
Oh, yes.
Years ago.
Nice.
Yeah, my main name is McCarthy.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
You might know.
Jack?
Nope.
Or?
Nope.
Sorry.
Leo, Greg?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So those are my brothers. So anyways, so this is an unexpired term. I mean, not to put you on the spot, you know, if all goes well this spring, would you be interested in, in being reappointed for when that?
I thought I was actually being
So the way
I understand.
Yeah, you're here for the, the, to fill, fulfill the, you know, the vacancy and then you would reapply. Would you just keep your?
So the answer is yes.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Check one off the list of seven people we have to find.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So can I have a motion to appoint Jeff Donsey to fill the unexpired term until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to Cohasset Harbor Committee? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, George. Thank you. So next up is License Impairments and Events. The CYB SA Little League Opening Day Parade, Saturday, May third. Is anyone on for that?
Chief.
Chief Pigley, okay. Again, all the information was in our packet. It's pretty perfunctory. It's an annual event. Loved by all. I don't know if they still have, hi, chief.
Hey there.
Hi, so we're just talking about the Little League Parade. It's, it's the same thing every year, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a standard, you know, recurring event. I've, I've been in touch with the, the folks at CYB SA and we're in good shape.
Okay. All right, um, do they still do the, the fire truck for the championship team?
They do, yeah.
Okay. Been a long time since I've been to one of these. Okay, so um, do I have a motion to approve the CYB SA Little League Opening Day Parade on Saturday, May third?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, next up is a new manager for Cohasset Pizza House for Sarah Cohen. Is Sarah in the audience? No? Okay. So I don't, we don't, I don't have any questions, obviously, for this. So can I have a motion to approve Sarah Cohen?
I would make a motion to approve.
Sarah Cohen is the new manager for the Pizza House. So Mr. Grady made the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna pass this signature. This way for, sorry. Okay, next up is a draft Town of Cohasset Security Camera Policy. So if you recall a few meetings ago when Susan Franklin and Corey Evans, Chair and Vice Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, were here, we were talking about some of the items coming up. I don't know if, is chief still on for this? Okay. They requested a draft, they, they requested a security camera policy. And so Chief and Mr. Senior and I met and talked about it. Chief brought in some materials that he found. I found some materials from some other towns. And so we put together this first draft of a security camera policy. It is not a procedure in terms of operation, in terms of procurement, in terms of all of that. But it is, it is a Town of Cohasset policy on who can request them, who can see it, et cetera, et cetera. So if everyone had a chance to read it, do we have any comments or edits? Chief, do you have anything you'd like to say since this?
No, it's, it, it, it was eye-opening to see how many different towns have these policies. I didn't realize that this was such a popular item, but, you know, a lot of towns have this now. So it seems like it's a reasonable way to go. And it, it, the, the policy, we, we made it, we edited it enough where I think it fits Cohasset. And it's not, not a big brother thing. This is to, it's more, more of a security system.
Right. Right, and it's only for, it's only for, you know, town-owned facilities. What, I'm sorry, Mr. Grady?
Chief, can we maybe add them to the stop signs? Tongue in cheek.
Definitely help the budget.
Especially during the time when kids are driving to school.
That's it. I was just being a one.
At this point, the stop signs are a suggestion.
Yeah.
You're right.
True.
Yeah. So anyways, this is a first draft. We're just having a conversation. I don't have a vote on the agenda for this. Any comments or edits? Anyone?
If I could just comment that I think it's very well-written, sets appropriate boundaries without going too deep into legalese. It seems like the right level of detail, setting appropriate boundaries. So whoever the author is, I think did a great job.
Well, it was a tag team.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, yeah, and what, what we wanted to convey that it really is for town facilities so, so that there aren't gonna be, you know, random survey, you know, security or surveillance cameras, you know, anywhere downtown or on the common or anything like that. This is really for, for, for buildings and facilities.
It, it just, it provides a level of authorization from the town manager and the board before, you know, a, a department head can't just install cameras. And it, it, we, I spoke with IT and, you know, the consensus is, you know, everything will go through the town manager and IT and be cleared. So it's, it's compatible with town systems and the, the proper boundaries, Godrails is set.
Yeah. Okay. Chris, I didn't put vote on the agenda, but can we vote on this?
I think you probably can. I mean, it's been fully discussed. I mean, if you want to wait, you can too, but I think
What, what's the sense of the board?
I'll, I will approve it.
I'd be very comfortable voting on this thing.
Mr. Farag?
Yeah, we could vote on it.
Okay, awesome. So can I have a motion to approve the Town of Cohasset Security Camera Policy dated February fourth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. We don't have to put it
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Mr. Senior, FY twenty twenty-five Midyear Financial Report.
Okay, thank you. So you all have on the, on drivers, also the major numbers from software. So any of you who want to keep that to every single budget line and
That would be me.
You're ready? So I will just highlight, so I was I've gotten to find a better way of doing this because, yeah, I have, I literally spent hours extracting stuff, I love what to put to this. And it's, and there's gotta be an easier way to do it. In some instances, we're fine through December, right? Revenues are fine, expenses are fine. The bank transfers to other funds, by the way, it looks like there wasn't to happen. I just wasn't sure how to record them because the budget, we made some amendments at special time to move some more money around. So that caught up with us. So I, I have to, I have to find a a much less time-intensive way of creating, of creating this report. But on the general fund side, everything is, is moving along fine. So that's, that's good. Tax collections are fine. Our excess tax collections are really, that's a spring thing because almost all of it's, almost all of it is on vehicle. The part that's not is actually good. We're actually running ahead on meals and food taxes. We're, we're well beyond fifty percent within the year. And we're actually a little ahead on boat access tax, which is interesting. Some of those people are paying us. That's good. In terms, so any question on the general fund?
So year-to-date through December thirty-first is, is halfway through, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not even expended fifty percent.
No, that's because the schools lag typically or whatever. They, they, because a chunk of their money gets paid at like a lump sum at the end.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Payroll.
Yes, yes. So I wouldn't count the, the schools are really the biggest lag on this and I wouldn't count that as, as accurate.
Does the year-to-date include encumbrances?
The encumbrances are not all up to speed as they should.
Okay. Okay.
And again, the answer to that question is yes.
Okay.
It does. So I mean, for example, the benefits are hot, but we pay our entire pension cost upfront. It saves us eighty thousand bucks by paying the entire year's sum and seven, two pigs of pain. A lot of people do the show, so we do that too. And we do that with our, our community and our workers' comp. We pay it in one lump sum early. Healthcare is a word like that. That's a monthly.
Yeah.
But otherwise, you know, the, the, this is, the, the numbers are fun. Right, yeah.
Okay.
Water, again, water is good too. Yeah, a lot of water is dead, it's front-loaded, so it's hard to judge that. You can't really judge that. It's not a twelve, even with spread out. But revenue wise, they're fine. They're, 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 one use, again, I think we've reported that one use has been consistently up year to year. I'm not entirely sure why, but it has been. So they're, they make money on water. They sell them on money. And the base fee, which is that, you could call it cattle charge, that's right in fifty percent, which is what you're shooting right now. So I do have to check a couple of things in here too, but they're, they're, they're doing fine. And Stewart is, again, not the same. So their, their suruse charges are fine. Remember, they're engaging new customers, so we're starting to see that now. Stop and Shop Plaza is baked into that now. Cloak Estates is baked into that now. It's not a major number, but it's revenue. And Cloak Estates is actually paying over time. So that's actually, it's kind of embedded in. But there's, there's other revenue coming in that, for, for a couple of years. And in fact, the buy-in fee for Stop and Shop is the same man that's been, the plaza that's been paying over the years is a steady stream of revenue on that. But they seem to be, again, a lot of their debts are front-loaded as well. So, so as a mayor, the numbers seem all okay. Questions? I, I, I'll be more like, sorry, I normally hear a lot more.
Yeah.
So there's charts I have to give you and there's a summary I have to give you. So I, I'm only going on that. So my apologies. That said, but not the, the, the other end and all the detail, those are on the record. So feel free to look at any of those lineups. If any questions, just.
For, for the accountants that we have working in, with you on the budget, in the audit, things like that, is that under general government or where, where would that be?
Yeah, they're in the, we're paying out the finance file. Basically using the salary and finance director to pay for the
Is that, is that going under or a little bit over?
It's about on target.
On target, okay.
And we already have an audit number. The audit cost went up a little bit because what Houston Paris Sullivan got bought by a company called Markham, which then merged with an even bigger company called CBIZ, which a friend of mine was at the Academy, so I'm gonna tell you more of the backstory about that. So we went from being on a first big basis with the lead owner and partner to being a rounding error at the moment, so.
Yeah.
We, we're in the middle of that now. So that, that's, it's a little bit slower than we know it would be just because of the personnel and also their changes. They initially gave us a new contract too. It was just, it was a poor, it had all kinds of indemnifications and a lot of stuff that we've never had before because they're a big national company, usually doing a big national business. It's not small little business, obviously.
Yeah.
So we, we wrote the agreement to know if I'm and in terms of the characters, they've been great. I would like to say that. We, we found a firm that has a current, any former finance director that, that are the principals. They've really been great. They've been very responsive and we've made some great progress. They've really been great. They've been very responsive and we've made some great progress. I gave them a report to CPC last night. It's up to speed. So we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting along well. Again, we're a little bit behind on the audit. I, I do need to get an update on that, uh, but we're, otherwise it's coming along fine.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will have a pivot then to. Let me start. Um, so next week we're going to go more in depth of the budget. So. This, I will also be providing, Kevin's been sparingly pulling together the budget book again. So it's gonna be a lot more materials that I want to give all of you in advance. And we'll massage and clean up as we get closer to the town meeting. It has departmental goals, objectives, um, you know, historical budgets and stuff. So it's, it's a lot more information about what we do, which I think is better for the residents anyway. Uh, for everyone, uh, and it's a great resource for us too. And so, but I did want to highlight, so you all have this. It's very hard to read in terms of, so, um, but let me highlight a couple of things that, um, that we know as of today. And by the way, when I talk about this year, let me, we do know the schools are having a challenge. They're still working through it. Uh, I've been in close contact with the superintendent here. I've met, I've met, I've met regularly and I think, um, but. We, we will continue that conversation for this year. So there's no answers yet. Fine, fine.
When, when is, um, because somebody asked me today, when is the report from their consultant going to come out?
That's a good question. I, I asked them again. I saw the school committee chair yesterday. I wasn't sure. I saw the superintendent last week and she thought she would have had it already.
Yeah.
It's probably a little delayed. So, not, not, not because of the schools. I'm not sure. So. If you blow that up one more time. Well, no, br- bring it back back. Sorry, I can't. Yeah, so, um, if you look at the third line called FY twenty five, you'll see our new growth, uh, our new growth number that came in, um, at seven fifty three. That's a really greedy number and. And the, but you can also see it's come down from the prior year, which is a thirty nine. Those are excellent numbers for a time of our size. I expect that we will end up with a decent number this year, um, and FY twenty six will really help us out FY twenty seven because we don't get the numbers until after the budget stuff. The, um, the, the, I saw ring is winding up, um, the one pleasant is winding, winding up. Uh, and there's really no other projects of that, and then those, that redevelopment on, first by San Antis, that's. Those are all, those are all in the process of getting their COs this year. So they, they, before June thirty, if they were not done, but now they. So we will see that final new growth number this cycle. And, uh, the assessments have been great catching stuff. Now, we also see this, but tear down rebuilds. It's a big one right down here on Main Street. So we'll probably catch more of that new growth. That usually takes two or three years to, to build up. Uh, depending on how much of the construction goes. For example, if I'm pleasant until my fully condo is, you know, we'll get, get another bump when, when the values are set for each individual unit. But the COs have not happened, I don't think, before June thirty, of course. The customer partner site, that's happening now. So. Uh, so, so that's been a real big number for us for a while and, uh, but it's going to start slowing. There's just, there's nothing, there's no projects out there and nothing that was looking for them, but. They, they, it's going to slow down. We, you know, the Atlantic redevelopment will bring something. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll see. There's nothing else that we're aware of on the horizon. Now, people actually live in their homes and um, that will, we will pick that up. Uh, it's not, it's not the same magnitude as twenty three ultimately our condo units on water. So. So the, um, the other, um, if I, if you, if I bring you down a little bit, uh, into the section called financing, let's go back. Right there. Um, so. I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll get to the bottom in a second, but our, our big budget buster, actually, do me a favor. Can we scroll down to the bottom of the page a little bit? Oh, right there. So if you look at health insurance, um, and it's the nine, one, nine, two, four line. We just got news that, um, the base increase is fifteen percent and the standard is ninety nine point nine to nineteen eighty. So we're hoping that we're no worse than the midpoint. And then, by the way, this is, we've had years of zero to, we had a negative number at one point. This is at a bottom, this is a very much not common, um, an aberration, um, that said, it's, it's a brutal aberration. That increase of one point two million dollars that's in the budget is, is real. And I'm hoping we're gonna, we're gonna be meeting in a couple of years with health, with our representative to see if we can't bring the plan costs down and make some tweaks. Uh, we'll have to work with the, uh, local unions to do that. Uh, unless there's things we can fix surrounding, which is rare, but we've done a couple of wellness initiatives that we didn't have to get here. And I'm not sure if those are going to be available.
And our health insurance is with Maya?
So it's a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, but it's all.
Are there any other options?
We can look at some other options. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, other, there's, uh, some of the other plans are going down less, are going off less in the area, but I'm not sure if their base is higher. They fire them through a brutal period of years ago. If you see the state's plan, it's challenges, um. If we end up leaving, that'd probably be a year from now, I think, because we really have the plan missing names.
Yeah.
You don't want to leap without planning. And we, we've had a good relationship. And I, I think that the, the partnership has been really good. That said, this is a, a very hard to swallow, uh, cost increase. Um, and again, it's not, it's medical inflation everywhere. A lot of it is apparently driven by drug costs, um, but not all of it. And, um, so we'll, I'll hear more when our work comes. So, uh, so everything is that revolving around that. So that, that sucked them a whole lot of money. Um, if there were a couple of lines above that, uh, the Norfolk County Pension, for the moment, that's actually fairly stable. In fact, the number that I plugged in there is the, for our prepayment. So if we pay our entire amount of FY twenty six, instead of paying three million, seven hundred and twenty five thousand, we pay three, six, five. So we do save a decent amount of money by paying it in advance. But as you see in the out years, um, the, the, the numbers are not good and, and, um, there's going to be a public meeting with the Norfolk County retirement folks in a couple of weeks again. Uh, because their, their, uh, their audit or their, um, their actuarial, uh, assessment, uh, says that they need to raise the funds more quickly, uh, a lot faster. Uh, which is unfortunately i- impossible. So I've been meeting with folks, uh, our PEP committee to try to figure out a way to not have that happen, not just to anybody in Norfolk County. Uh, so.
So they're moving the goalpost?
Well, this is some of the moving goalposts. They won't move the goalposts, which is probably a problem, right? The goalpost is actually in the twenty thirties.
Yeah.
They're trying to fully fund it by twenty thirty two, which is not the law, it's twenty forty. And twenty thirty five is what PER Act, the state, uh, organization overseeing all this has been pushing. But Norfolk County has been pushing it twenty thirty two, which is not required. And, you know, what I see is a spike like this and then a drop, which is just simple. You'd never do that, right? So, and if you were budgeting and expensing a bubble, you'd smoothly find a way to smooth it out.
Right.
Uh, that's all we're asking. Some other communities, uh, could see increases of a couple of million dollars. It's just, it's budget busting. So. And on top of that, the healthcare costs, right? That's, it's, it's, it's not good. So, um, that said, twenty six is okay. That number is good. I mean, that's locked in. Um, it's the healthcare that's the problem. And so, um, with the schools, you know, we're really looking for some, some more money. We're in a contract negotiation cycle, trying to stretch this out a little bit. I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing a little more free cash in, in the initial plan. And if you go back up a little bit, um, it's in the other financing sources, uh, section. The, uh, there's free cash coming in, healthcare, at least one year. Um, there's some proposed money. We've been using extra money to bring a reserve fund up. I have it still in there. There's also money, by the way, not here, but it's another hundred thousand planned to go into Cal because we've been committing to increase that amount every year. The thing is that the OPEP contribution, uh, a- again, this is not, I haven't presented this officially. You know, I'm just talking at this point, saying where we are. Uh, my recommend, and what I'm leaning towards is recommending that it be had, at least this contribution be had for at least now. Uh, we put in a contribution in the spring and one in the fall. The fall contribution to three fifty and, and the rest of it, which has been going up five percent, has been done at, uh, annually. Uh, I, I just, you know, the OPEP will solve itself, uh, and once the pension costs are done, that'll fund, i- it'll be able to still fund it. We have to live in today and, and, um, I, I, I still want to be true to the commitment. Uh, that said, a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars is real money. That's a teacher, that's a couple of teachers, that's a couple of parents, that's. Not his, that's, I, I don't think, I, I don't think this is, this is the time, and this is, this is the time when we may take just a small pause. I'm just, like, you could tell me no, but I'm right. This is where we are at the moment to make this work. And, uh, so, uh, you'll see the actual department of budgets next week, um, and again, we'll have the materials with it. But this is just kind of the overview of where we are. Um, the, um, you know, one, one, one of the things, it's not a huge thing. If you go, we go back, if you scroll back down a little bit, kind of to the shared budget details. You'll see that the, uh, in the second line there, one twenty, uh, one twenty five, the school resource officer doubled because. The resources, right? So, um, uh, and it really doesn't take a whole lot of pressure off the police budget because we just added three recruits, which is good. I've been looking for that for a long time. So.
Right.
But that's, and again, it's, it's working really well, as I understand it. That said, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's a real cost. And with the CIO, so that, that, there's a, a fair increase there. That's the fourth line. But I met with Ron and, you know, what's happening is that instead of the capital picking up, the fireworks and stuff, those are being moved, it doesn't really need to operate. He's in the third year now after having bought them. And, um, they basically have everyone on a hook and cybersecurity is huge. So that he's seeing these big increases. There's nothing we can do. So, um, uh, so I, I, we have to fund the fireworks, right? It's really not, it's really not a question. So, um, he asks for more than what's in there. And this, this will keep us okay. Um, so I, so as I say all of that, what I've been trying to do is, is look with every department and every, and everything we do, to find ways to economize, to maybe to think, think different. And, um, so this kind of blends though. Again, if anyone's free to stop me and ask any questions, um.
I, I just had a question on the OPEP. I can't remember from the last town meeting, what is the percentage that we're at now, give or take, if you?
Funding wise?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez. I want to say twenty-ish percentage, twenty.
No, I think it's higher.
It's high, maybe thirty. Um, it's a fair, it's a, it's a lot of money. It's, it's, it's over six million dollars. Um, so we've, we've done all the right things. So I, I, I'd be dealing with that. We had, we had the plan, but we've run a few towns, and there are actually towns that have actually fully funded. Little fair, it's not really, there's a lot more tests I've done, so. We have a plan that will fully fund it once the pension costs. And we've been putting money away. So it's, 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 we're good. And we haven't had to tap it, right? Because the, the money's there for the, the, you know, the expense that might occur down the road. So right now we're okay.
Because the intent always was that once the Norfolk County pension, you know, dovetail down as we became more fully funded and that to the requirement that the OPEP funding would increase to get us closer, but.
So for example, if, if this four million dollar number that we're projecting for next year, that's going to fall radically. Because it's, the ca- pension costs are going to be baked in now. Uh, so that this was mostly catching, so that would fall radically. And the plan was to split the difference. Half of it would go to OPEP and the other half could be done, the time we're doing the monitoring, so could do capital. Uh, that data may push out a little bit further now, so it's probably talking to twenty twenty. So as I look at all of this and I look at other communities, I said, well, what, what can we do? Well, the, 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 the thing that came right screaming out at us and, and it happened partly because of the fire. We took a hard look at the RTF. What do we do with the RTF? So, um, basically what I'm going to propose is that we're considering, I'm asking to vote or anything, I'm just laying this out as an initial conversation tonight. To turn the RTF into an enterprise and to take it off the budget. And most RTFs in the state are funded that way. They're, 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 they're not. Some are, are baked in. But, but many of, many of them are not. Hanover just is going through the process of moving theirs out of their budget and then moving it to an enterprise fund. Uh, I'll give you some examples, uh, of other communities. So Plymouth has a hundred and ninety dollar fee, Kingston a two hundred and forty dollar fee. This is just a sticker fee. Ducks project five, uh, Hanover two sixty plus. I don't know if they've set exactly what the number's going to be. Um, and basically, you know, as we took a hard look at the RTF, it, it, it costs us north of seven hundred thousand dollars. And if, if, what I'm assuming was, was to forecast. And we're only generating that two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of revenue. Now, I know this is sticker fee, but that doesn't go to the RTF, right? The, in fact, none of the revenue technically goes to the RTF. But the sticker fee is all facilities, the multi, the, 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 the beef, shelf, the RTF, stuff for both. The money that's easily, more easily targeted back is your per bag, you know, when you buy the bags, that, that's clearly a revenue. It doesn't go back to the RTF. And then we sell some of the products, you know, cardboard is recycled and we get a little bit of, very little money comes back from anything else that stays. And then, uh, with discharge, everybody naturally have to pay. So, um, I was just going through those fees today too. We're woefully behind. Someone has to raise because we're losing, we're losing money every day on some of that, some of that. So.
Based on our cost to dispose of.
Disposal, we are, we are spiking. For example, tires, it's like, I don't know why we, I don't know that we should be taking tires, but. Our cost is, is way higher than what it, what it says. Now, most, most people don't see the minute you go and get your tires replaced, they keep them, right?
Right.
So, uh, so I, I, I think some of this is a vestige that in the old days, um, you need to. A couple of things we're going to need to stop taking. Um, but in order to make it a nicer, cleaner place and to operate better and more smoothly, it really does need to operate much more like a business and much more dollars and cents. So, um, having kicked us around, and again, I had meetings last week, I have meetings again today with, uh, Brian Joyce, Michelle Leary and our consultant, um, Frank. Who has been in the waste business for many, many years. He actually ran a company for a long time. And he got bored with his semi-retirement and, and it's, it's why I picked him out of that wine store. So he's now, I tell you this, because this is his first true love. It's kind of stunning. So we talked about having a resident per, uh, again, these are all subject to, um, to, 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 to more details, but uh, a resident permit and a non-resident permit. Uh, everyone's not going to use the RTF. I think many people will buy a sticker just to have to drop off stuff if they need. There are people of resident, uh, uh, curbside pickup, they pay for that. There, there's a belief that there's a fair number of people who might buy from outside at a higher rate, obviously, they have to pay a higher rate. And they'd have to pay the, all the fees, that's the same. Uh, people in Hall have no options, right? There's, right? It's nothing in Hall. They even hang up some people who may live in the area, might want it, and thus. And so, we're, we're, the, the projection was that we might sell like two thousand resident permits, like two hundred fifty nine resident permits initially. Uh, and then raise the, the fees for disposal, you know, get tighter on some of that. And, um, you know, it doesn't quite, still doesn't quite break even yet. I think we need a year or two to figure out how it's going to work, how many stickers are we going to sell? Uh, is there interest in other communities, uh, people in other, other communities? Are there ways to bring the cost down and, and raise revenue? The, the, uh, so we're going to have to leave some number in the, in the, in the, uh, deep in that, which I'll just in there, because we're going to have to make it. When the water apartments go out, there's trouble in town to bail it out. Uh, I, I don't, I want, want to go on this clear ride. I understand that we may have to keep a little, we're going to have to keep some money in a budget line, which we hopefully will have to use if they're just in case. Um, and we'll probably have to do that for at least a couple of years until we fully understand how this shakeout. That said, by making a set enterprise fund, it, 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 I think it lifts the cost from the taxpayers. And it also allows us to spend the money in a different, uh, prioritize things of the budget that needed, uh, our, our fire and police, our, our public works, I'm talking on the town side, right? And it allows me more freedom, um, uh, to, to, to do that. We're really tight all the way right now. Then it's going to get tighter and, and this, this buys us more time. And also from the general conversation I've had with folks, it's like, well, the RTF is great, but everyone doesn't use it. It should be really subsidized. So we're subsidizing it to the two, four, five hundred thousand dollars a year, right? And I'm not sure that, you know, that's a lot of money. Um, so, um, again, I, I think we're going to crossroads. If, if we go enterprise fund, we really have to write tight. Uh, and we're only making changes. We're going to get an update next week on where we are with the insurance and, 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 and rebuild. If we don't go with the enterprise fund and maintain it in the form it is, we're going to have to, we're going to have to scale it. We can't maintain it in this format. We can't hemorrhage a couple of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in subsidy for this facility any longer. Um, it just doesn't make sense, um, operationally. Um, there's too many other priorities. Not that we're going to get rid of it, but we'd have to scale it down. If, if you don't go to our enterprise fund and have it pay for itself, the subsidy has to drop because I have to pay, I, we have to move the money around for the priorities more to set. So, um, I gotta, it, the, the, there's. So um, I gotta, it, the, the, there's work come, but I just wanna lay this out there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you.
David?
Would this resident permit include the beach sticker, or would that be separate now?
So you'd have to choose a number. So we keep the, the current stickers as they are, and it'll be in all facilities except in the RTF, cause the sticker's already sick, they say. Uh, going forward, there'd be a separate, the, 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 basically a parking sticker for the beach, and, cause the sticker lets you park in all places too.
Yeah, downtown, yeah.
Government island or something like that, so, that, that, that would be that, and then the RTF would be a separate sticker, so, we're talking about how that might work, um. It would have to be tied to a, a vehicle still, because of the way we use security, um, but you know, we might have, maybe, uh, maybe you get two license, maybe. Again, I, I don't wanna go crazy here, I don't wanna lock myself in something, but we talked about, maybe, uh, you could, that permit fee could get you two stickers, cause you may have two cars. And, you know, maybe you buy, so, so, you, you know, you maybe use the pickup for the dump, and maybe you don't have, maybe you, you know. You know, your spouse, is it, that, it, it has to pick up, and you, they have, on the other car, you still wanna have a dumpster, but we still need to tie them to a license plate, cause there's a concern that they may circulate. If they're not, uh, we, this is something we have to take, we have to. So, it, it may not be as tricky as, as it appears if we do something like that. Uh, so it'd be more like, well, if the, a family, and then. And then the, the, the fees would tweak, and we'd also, we're also taking on some things that. We wanna bring the boutique back, right, too, so, so as part of this, is, is to restore the RTF. And now, what I said was to actually make it nice, uh, improve this town's operation, we're actually trying to be open fairly soon. We had, uh, it was a nice meeting with a group of folks who wanna help volunteer and get the boutique back, so a nicer boutique. Which has been really important, cause it's not just the, uh, the environmental friendliness of swapping the goods, but there's a, there's a. Classic cultural thing about that, right, it's, it's a place that people, uh, I, I, Kenny do get shared her son's college essay. About how he would go out there and, and get like bikes and repair things, it's like his first thing that he did with the business, and all the other things. That they've done over the years, and um, you know, there, there's, there's something to be said for that, and, and so the fact that we're gonna partner with this group of, of residents who are very eager to, to, to work. It's, it's nice, but said, in order to support that, we, we need to have a better operation, um, and, 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 so, um. We'd like to have that, we'd like to bring that back, and as part of this.
I take, I take it that the, uh, discussion regarding all the other parts of the RTF will be for the next meeting, is that correct, this is just.
Yeah, but well, you can ask me, I, I can answer, I will.
Yeah, eh, eh, I would just say that the, I, I agree that the boutique, a couple of things, is that the boutique and the scouts where they collect the cans. Are, are two things that are normally found maybe in a, in a typical RTF, but are, are important to Cohasset to keep them going, and they both create public value. Uh, which is not, um, found in the budget, so on the scout side, the cans that they collect, the money that they use gets put back into the town. Uh, with all the service projects that they do, and not only that, but also the labor hours, uh, that, that goes. Into a project where you can have ten people working on a project, giving the free labor to the town, that is not encapsulated within our budget. On the, on the expense or the revenue side, but nevertheless, it's public value that's being created. Boutique, same kind of thing, people do the swaps there and go get things, and it helps recycle goods that would normally just go into a landfill, so. Uh, that has a, a public purpose as well, uh, but I do think, when you were talking about looking at the different services of what things. Do we not need to take that are costing us money, um, and then, eh, eh, as far as with the construction, eh, I think the question is at some point. When do we have somebody come into, uh, design what some of these buildings are gonna be, like, when's the appropriate time to do that?
So we're actually doing some of that now, behind the, talking about how this work and look, and again, so next week, I think we'll get more, an update on what the insurance process is. And then depending on how this conversation goes, cause they're all kind of linked together, we've gotta really go in on the RTF, we kinda have to make it enterprise fund, we gotta get it out there, cause. It's gonna be very hard to pay for the investments, we can't have it, and I also think as enterprise fund, we could, we could theoretically borrow money or have paid for it, but the enterprise fund is supposed to, keeping it off the, the, the tax rules. That said, I think there's a, there's already some changes up there, and, uh, and, and when I was talking, we were talking earlier, this is actually some, this is a. Really nice changes coming that will automate some of this and make it nicer, and we wanna make it look, by the way, it's always looked a little bit, even like a, like a dump, right? We need to make it look a little bit less like a dump, I mean, it's got, it is an RTF, but it should be cleaner and nicer, and, um, and I, I think, um. That's all part of this common mission, is getting it to, if we're gonna ask people to pay more, they should be getting a nicer, cleaner service for it, and, and we should restore this. That David, those pieces that are very class, right, scouts as soon as possible, and the boutique once we have a, you know, a little bit, a little bit further on.
And, and the other thing is, is with, with, there's a myriad of regulations, you know, you've got DEP regulations, and, you know, the way we collect the batteries, the way we collect the lithium batteries, the way. You know, all these things have to be housed in different ways, uh, but we have to make sure that they're being properly. Housed to fuel all the other things that go on, so, I, I just think we need somebody in sooner rather than later to begin that design work, isn't it?
So we have, we have, so, so the gentleman's bringing our consultants to, so he's been working on what we would need. Now, we, again, that said, the board's gonna have to get around, get, 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 there'll have to be a proposal to say, well, we wanna do these, this, 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 all of the next. I tell you, this is kind of the conversation, I wanna get this to your head, as, as a group, you'll hear an update on the insurance, and I think within the next couple of weeks, we'd like to have, a, after that. A, a, a kind of a plan with some visuals of how this might look and how it will work.
Yeah, because I mean, we're gonna need, I, I, I realize we have a consultant regarding the functionality of it, which is great, but we are gonna need either an engineer or a designer, cause we're gonna be. Doing buildings, you know, ac- actual.
That is, that's how complicated is that, I, I thought the same thing, I mean, solicitor equipment. Just gets installed, and you have safety stuff around it, and you, and you're on it, and so, yeah, you know what, I, I don't wanna. I'm, I'm, I don't wanna go way too deep into this.
Yeah.
It's, 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 yes, and it's not as complicated as I initially thought it was gonna be. That said, we do have to have consensus about it, and that will all come over the next week.
Yeah, great, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Yep, I, 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 uh, does everyone like, understand and, and in agreement on this enterprise fund concept for the RTF?
I would fully.
Mr. Flex?
I think it's a great idea, uh, the key though is something that Chris you said, which is, we're gonna be charging people more, we've gotta demonstrate that it's better.
Yeah.
And we're getting back the scouts, and we're getting back boutique, and it's better and it's cleaner. So, it solves a budget issue, and people are paying more, but they're getting more.
Yeah, but it's also putting a choice in people's hands as well, some people don't use it, so that's gonna be attractive in and of itself. You know, again, if you talk about having people come in from across the border and stuff like that, and that. Paying more substantial fee because they want the dump, like I said, I, I kept a sticker and used the hang and dump for years and years and years, cause they had the house there. So I don't see why we couldn't do the same.
Is, is there, is there any value in, in doing, um. Um, a com- a comparison, or, or looking at the net sum differential between the current all facility sticker revenue? And what might happen to it, so for example, say in my house, my husband might get. An RTF sticker and not a beach sticker, and I will get a beach sticker and not an RTF. So we're, we're not gonna buy four stickers.
Right, that's one of the, that's one of the unknowns about this, I was walking into Bryant's today too, and my, so Bryant lives here as well, right, so. Um, we talked to Paul and all that, I'm like, I'm not sure if that's really gonna be effective, though, we might actually try to, we, we're, we're trying to get more data. And, and we may actually pull some users, uh, who are up, it was, uh, uh, see if we get some people wanna talk to us, as they drop stuff off, and get a little bit, little bit more information.
I think you may, personally, cause going in throws me a curve. Here's on the car, I think you still may be better served with an all purpose, and that gives, you have a choice, you know, if, eh. That's, I mean.
I hear you.
I'm just putting it out there, because do I want two stickers, like I have two car wash stickers on the car, you know, that, that, that kind of thing, if I'm in debt, I'm rough, I'm.
But then all that revenue has to go to.
So we, we could, we could do something like, you know, people have problems with the kind of.
Or you could do different colors, for instance, but a single sticker, you know?
So we, um, the, the, the challenge is, this will be implemented for July one, right, so we're, and the, the, the stickers are already going, are, are already going on sale in a month, and then.
Right.
Wanted for this year, so we'd have to do like a one-year period and figure it out, and then we could potentially do something different the second year, um, so. Um, and I hear you, I hear what you're saying, I, I, I don't want people's windows to be covered in stickers.
I'm just putting that out there, that it may just, you might complicate, then you have your different funding mechanisms, so it might be something as simple as this, so one, you, one, you know, an all-purpose, including the beach, it's a purple. And just an RTF is a red, you know, I, I, again.
And just the beach is yellow or something, right, no, 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 I, then, there's definitely different ways of doing it, it just, we'd have to go through a one-year period of. Difference.
That's figuring it out, yeah, and the, the other thing to consider too would be the, 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 um, facility stickers that the Sandy Beach Association sells. That, um, you know, would have to be color-coded correctly, and then we're counting on a, a kid, a twelve-year-old, thirteen-year-old's at the gate to Sandy Beach, figuring out what sticker is what. You know, so, it, it, it's, it's something that can be figured out, but I, I just think we have to think it, think it through, and, um. Make sure that we're not, you know, losing net money.
That's a big thing, that's, that, this has to be run like a business.
Well, that's why I think you're, you may be better served going across the board, just to be honest with you, it's gonna simplify things.
Yeah, I hear you, that's a good story to help.
All right, so I think you have agreement, we can continue to proceed on this enterprise fund, fund set for the RTF. So, next up is Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue update, um.
You do, right, huh?
So, Mr. Senior, Mr. Grady, um, so we have something in the packet. Right, the, um. The quote?
Oh, yes, yes, so, um, and I actually have the funds, so, so, um.
Oh, good.
The, the quote in the packet is for the, uh, HVAC study.
Study, yep.
So after having, um. Shake in the tree, um. Once upon a time in two thousand twelve, uh, when Avalon was built, uh, they gave, uh, a lot of money to the town. And one of the tranches of money was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, it, it was called, uh, Equipment and Procedures. And a hundred thousand was spent right away on computers and stuff like that, and the other fifty did get spent under SAD. And it's now up to sixty-three thousand, twenty-six thousand, thirty-three cents.
Yeah.
Uh, so what I would ask the board to do is to vote that, uh, to vote that, that go to the study. And then I think I had found another consulting law in, from some years ago, in my office that we hadn't used on, that I could use twenty-seven thousand for.
Okay.
And again, this would also clean out a, a, an account that's been a city for a long time.
Okay.
And it's a totally legitimate use of the money, cause, uh, you know, it's, it's for anything.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on, on the need for the HVAC study, and why we're doing it, no, okay, so, um. May I have a motion to accept the transfer of sixty-three thousand? What was it, sixty?
Well, the remaining money in the Avalon gift account for town equipment and procedures.
For the remaining money in the Avalon gift account. For.
Town equipment.
Town equipment and procedures. To be transferred for the HVAC study for forty-one Highland Ave.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make the rest of what the other change, but I can do this.
Okay.
We're just funded with HVACs.
Awesome.
Also comes out of the capital, we don't, we don't need the money from capital.
Oh, that was part of the six hundred and thirty-five? Okay. All right, um.
Speaking of, um, Town Hall, I think, Chris, if we had any idea when, since I'm just, soon as, apparently, of getting a meeting with those, the, the. Brian, and if we can get those.
We can have a meeting.
Yes, sooner than later, so we can.
Can we do it Friday morning, cause I'm working from home?
Yeah.
As in like this Friday morning?
As in this Friday morning?
No, the same principles.
Yeah, and, um, so Susan Franklin, Chair of Capital Budget, had sent. Um, the working group, a request to appear before Capital on the, on the, um, tenth. Or the eleventh, but they've pushed, she's pushed that out to February twenty-fourth, which is good, because they had quite a list of, um. Information that they wanted. To be presented, and I think it would be good for us to have another meeting or two before we go to Capital.
Let's stick up very briefly. After CPC last night, or during, I forget, I think it was after, uh, Chairman asked me if there was any potential company, I said possibly, I said, but I think. For, for capital, I said, that may come more from, should an agreement be worked out with a not-for-profit group for the historic side. On touring, that may be where more of that ass comes from eventually, but I said, it could be for other parts.
Wi- windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I.
Yeah, yeah.
I loved it, other parts of the.
Okay, okay, all right.
I wasn't sure if that was gonna get part of along, this cycle or not till next year, or in the fall.
All right, um, anything else on Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave? Nope, okay, so Town Manager update?
Um, I gotta take a month of, of all the time, I don't know, those other things, that said, we're about to apply for a grant. Uh, our IT director is very, very aggressive and seeking, so we're, we're, we won a fiber grant last year, which, which is connecting. One, one, they've got candy into our fiber network, um, and also the, um, that, that, uh. The, the communications, uh, farmer, and, um. Uh, he, we're about to apply for a two hundred thousand dollar grant to upgrade our GIS, merge that into a, um. The GIS, our, you know, our chart mapping with our, with, with our. Which is, which is a lot of our debt, so it's gonna be potentially a down, much more user-friendly, and also much more. It could be much more geospatial, look at, so you might be able to pull materials on locations, on buildings, or stuff like that, 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 in, in a much easier way than we can do. Uh, so, we're hoping that, uh, we're hoping, that, that'll be a life for this, but it's an exciting step, we actually have a half-time person. We're hoping to make a full-time person, who works where we're on now, um, is a GIS person on other things, so she, we haven't had a full-time staff. Who's GIS trained since Jason left this for me, for a while, so, it's great to have the talent back on, to see, um. Just the way we're going electronically, you know, just the way data is. That's, that, I think we just, uh, got another needed grant, so, I think, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, great, thank you, um, select board comments, Mr. Flex?
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Good tonight, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Farag?
I'd nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Okay, um, I would like to comment to, um. Our citizens of Cohasset, coming up this spring, we have fifteen elected positions, um, fifteen elected people are either up for renewal. Or, or will not run, and I encourage everybody to look at those and run, we also are looking at approximately. Sixty appointments to other boards and committees this spring for opening, so, um, encourage all your friends and families to get involved, there's lots of things to be interested in. And, um, we can't do what we do without everyone, without everyone participating, um, I went to advisory last week, and we briefly talked about. What we had talked about as a board before, re- reviewing the financial policies, having them updated, because it's been since twenty-twelve and twenty-sixteen since we had a look at them, and, um. The, uh, the Chair, Mrs. Estino, suggested that perhaps one of her members and one of us, um. Who may be interested, work together on those policies to bring something back for both boards, as opposed to. Two boards trying to get that work done, so I'll let you know where that is, and if anyone wants to volunteer, let me know, um, otherwise, I will do it. Um, I didn't get to Capital last night, I'm a slacker, um, did you go to Capital?
They talked about schools, so Michelle gave me a quick update, so I had a big conversation about the schools.
The schools, yeah, so that, schools have, have cameras, buses, athletic vans, um. Curb, uh, sidewalks, asphalt paving, driveways, things like that, I don't know if the furniture stayed on the list, or if that got bumped. Yeah, okay, all right, um, but Capital is just, just in the information gathering stage, they haven't made any determinations on anything at all. So, um, that's all I have, um, so at this point, um, can I have a mo- motion, we have minutes to approve? The minutes of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, uh, any conversation about them? Nope, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
That is second, by Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Were you at the meeting?
I was not here, but I reviewed the meeting on tape, so I saw.
Okay. Can, can David, oh, he can, okay. Okay, all in favor, I, all right, so, my gosh, we're actually ahead of schedule, um, I don't have any other topics, so can I have a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-four PM?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So our next meeting, guys, we're gonna start running the gaunt here, we meet next week, next Tuesday. School vacation week, we're off, February twenty-fifth, we come back, and then I think we're every Tuesday in March, so, um. So um, roll up our sleeves and get it all done. Thank you, everybody.